Open it and Steve Malone?
Here.
Okay, we have a full board, so we won't be seeing any openers tonight. The agenda this evening, under application of public hearings, is planning board number twenty-four dash zero zero two. That's a site plan review application. Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of TC Legacy LLC request a site plan review for the first phase of an expansion of their mixed use in commercial industrial development and associated site improvements at sixty-seven California Street. Subject property is currently shown at tax map one oh eight lot six in the commercial industrial and rural agricultural districts. Item B, planning board number twenty-four dash zero zero three. Site plan review application. Horizons Engineering on behalf of New Car Nissan of Keene request a site plan review for construction of a new flex space building and associated site improvements for their dealership at five four four Manhattan Highway. Subject property is currently shown at tax map two 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 lot thirty-four in the business district. Item C, planning board number two four dash zero zero four. Site plan review application. Fieldstone Land Use Consultants on behalf of Asher Construction LLC request a site plan review for the construction of a contractor bay facility at zero Safford Drive. The subject property is shown at tax map two oh nine lot four and located in the industrial park district. Under discussions and other business, we'll be discussing ex parte communication and anything else that comes up and then adjournments. So first item, regional impact. Anything on tonight's meeting requiring us to?
I'm aware that there is none.
Surrounding towns, okay. Motion by Michael Yor that there is, that we do not have regional impact tonight, so we don't have to notify surrounding towns. Second ended by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now we've had minutes, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
I made the motion.
Motion by Brandon to approve the minutes is our second.
Oh, second.
Second by Michael York, is there any further discussion on changes or alterations or any of that? I'm hearing any? And all those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye. Aye, all those opposed? That's done. So that's our first application coming up, and that is the site plan review for TC Legacy. And that is mixed use and expansion of your commercial industrial development. So we have the application in front of us, and we will see whether the application is complete. They did not have the certification of septic designer, but we just got that in. I think everyone has a copy of that, this is from Jeff Hert. Talking about the septic system on there. Includes the septic system is fine, but it actually looks like there are two septic systems on there already. And they're gonna put a third on by phase two, but go get to that. Would you go with checklist for?
Yes. For the record, John, I'm with Fieldstone Land Consultants here on behalf of TC Legacy LLC. Also with me tonight are the principals of the LLC, Richard Dan and Jennifer. Walking through the application, the first being name and address of owner. It's listed here on the pages, and then also the title block. Tax map and lot number also on the title sheet and every sheet on the title block as well. North arrow written in graphic scale, one inch equals thirty. So we do have some plan sheets that are one inch equals fifty, and then the existing conditions, which was larger scale, and then the other plans are one inch equals forty. Our scale, one inch equals forty, and written and graphic. Name and address of the flat and preparer, so we have Fieldstone Land Consultants. Vicinity sketch, so we have a locust front cover and a sheet. Name and address of all butters and landowners, so on our existing conditions, we have the butters. So each one is shown with their tax map lot number, owners of record. And this is what's shown on our butters. Physical features and uses of land within two hundred feet of the site, so again, existing conditions showing existing woods, wetlands are highlighted here in blue. So the tree lines, the green, orange here is showing the outline of the property along the street. And then uses being the buildings that are on the site. And then perimeter boundary lines of the lot area and square feet and acres, so the boundary is shown here. Roughly twenty acres as shown here. Any lists over here where it shows both acreage and square feet on the notes. The shape, size, height, location, and uses of this structure on the site and those that are proposed. So we're showing on the existing conditions, building finished floor, where the buildings are, so these existing buildings shown, metal shedded. The other buildings all across the site here. And then proposed is on site plan and showing two buildings in a phase one and a phase two. Location, name, and width of any existing and proposed roads on the property. So there are no roads on the property, however, California Brook Road is part of the frontage, also California Street is part of the frontage. Again, identification of access to the site, the public street, site distances, access points, curbs, cuts, and proposed changes to existing streets. So there's no proposed changes to any streets. The existing curbs are remaining unchanged when that was developed. The site distance within two hundred feet of each direction is not changed in any way. Location and number of parking spaces and loading spaces. So in both the proposed and the existing conditions, we show number of spaces shown with these circles with a number inside that dictates how many spaces there are. These are, this portion here that's proposed is gravel parking, so they're not actually striped, but there's this dictating where this basically would be. Landscape plan. Location, type, and nature of all existing and proposed lighting. We have submitted a lighting plan which shows proposed and existing lights on the site. There's a photometric plan showing the extent of proposed lighting, all facing away from the budding neighbors, and then the symbols here for the existing lights on existing buildings. Natural features such as water bodies, ledge out property, wetlands, so that was back on the proposed site plan and existing conditions showing outlined in blue. The north and the west corners here, to the wood line here, is the extent of the wetlands. Existing and proposed grades and top of that, top of graphic contour, five foot. We have a grading plan, the existing conditions, so the existing contours of the site, and then proposed grading and drainage plan showing proposed here on the site, so the proposed contours, and then the lighter dashed lines of the existing. Existing, the size and accurate location of existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, indoor fire ponds. So we have on both existing and proposed is where proposed well is, there's a utility plan showing this, and then the existing well, septic. Existing conditions that are so existing well, proposed wells, and it is private septic, so there's an existing septic system. So that's the letter we got from Tom Forrest regarding the attachment of the proposed garage, and then there's gonna be a septic system that's proposed for the other building, and that was permitted by Tom Forrest as well. The means of providing water supplies, so I've shown the proposed well providing water to the proposed building. Surface drainage patterns, so on our grading and drainage plan, we, there's the contour shown, and then there's also arrows dictating which direction of flow the water is on the site. Copy and certification by licensed septic designer that existing system is sufficient for existing and proposed use. So initially, we had on there NA, and we were going to say that we were going to have Forest Designs provide that letter, they had since provided that waters, understanding. So that's now included in the list. Location and type of proposed sewage disposal system, so as mentioned before, for utilities, we have the existing septic system over here and the proposed septic system. So existing and proposed on site wells only seven five foot deep, so that is, that is shown as one of our waters existing proposed. Soil survey data from Justice Will survey map, so there is the letters that are dictated on the plan to what soils are on site. Grading. That's these lines that are showing here across the property with these symbols, they're smaller on the gravestone. Soils, linchance, soils are there. Okay, number twenty-four, the location of any existing or proposed easements, restrictions, indoor covenants. So there are no easement restrictions, all setback lines are shown, property lines are shown. Architectural plans, so what was submitted, and I believe the board got a packet, but I have extra copies here, was for the proposed garage, which is a pre-fabricated metal building, and then the phase two buildings, we have a layout of that as well. But I have extra copies. Okay, thank you.
A question. Are you showing the entire property, piece of property? Or is there a part that actually extends, it's not shown on the map?
Yeah, on this, right, on this one, for the existing conditions, a partial existing conditions on just this end of the property. And then the entirety from the tax map is on the cover sheet.
So we don't, so we don't have any information about grade or how, what degree of forest cover or whatnot on the, that northern part?
Yeah, that's, oh, it's correct, so we have what's proposed tree lines on our plan, on anything that would be impacted, the remainder of the site up here is, is not shown, it's off of what was surveyed.
Okay.
It's gonna remain as it is, and it looks like the building part of it, the construction part is going on down at this end of the lot, like a little bit.
Yep.
That part is setback, all requirements setbacks are done in that, and right.
Right, this is forest, none of this is changing past these forest lines over here, and there's, there's no use up there, other than maybe forest, or you know, or logging or something, but there's no other use up in there.
So it's okay?
Because we were focusing on this part of the property anyway, that, regardless, it really doesn't make much of a difference.
Just checking.
Correct, that's pretty succinct, right?
In and out of when I'm building, and it looks like, I think, the floodplains are part of that there.
Yes, floodplains.
Any other questions about the completion of the application? If not, a motion to accept the application as complete and proceed to public hearings. Okay, Richard Lane, to that the application is complete and to proceed to public hearings, seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we'll go right to the public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, and
So this is the existing site at sixty-seven California, California Street. Roughly twenty acres, as mentioned, nothing is changing further on the site here. As outlined, the orange one here is the right of way property line. Setback lines are shown, there are existing buildings on site, and this is a multi-tenant commercial industrial site now, so they have various tenants come up. Auto repair, they have a cabinet maker. Other businesses from here, so those are to remain, there was an addition done, preliminary was done by the applicant about a year ago, as, as they came forward to discuss the overall plans. So moving. Our proposed plan, this is an overall site plan, showing both phases, what they're looking for approval on the site plan review. There's proposed garage fifty feet by fifty feet. As mentioned, that was a pre-fabricated metal building. So this is the extent, it looks like pavement here, but this is actually a gravel parking lot. Parking space is shown for larger vehicles here, but if they're the heat line, ten foot in width. Nine by eighteen for the other parking spaces. So our calculations for spaces are based on this here. And then phase two is going to include the contractor base that are shown over here, there's five units shown. That would be phase two, however, one of the deal in entire application, well, phase one and phase two. They're looking for making priority on a phase one, constructing that, being vested in the project, and showing substantial completion on this portion of the drainage, which will be constructed here, and then followed up by phase two in one to three years. So that was written in as, as a, that just phase one tonight, we heard as part of the agenda. However, the application was submitted for, for both phases, and that's how the applicant wants to, to move forward, is redoing both phases, which are the two buildings.
Tonight, Eric, you just said you were reviewing only one phase tonight, or two phases, clear, clear that up?
Looking for approval for both phases.
Yeah.
This overall plan shows both phases. The plans that showed what phase one would be breaking out, which would be the proposed garage, the utilities to that garage. What's highlighted here, hatched in this gray color, which would be gravel parking, so all these parking spaces. A grass conveyance well, so this is the drainage that's presented to you, pick up any runoff from the proposed parking, runs this way, would hit into the swale and then go into an infiltration basin. So the sizing of that basin is based on full build out for phase one and phase two.
Part of phase one.
So all stormwater erosion controls, everything would be done as phase one stabilized site. So walking through our plans here, we have grading and drainage, so this is full, total base filled out. Phase one is this square here in phase two. So there would be a high point for phase two pitching to the north and south, going into that conveyance well, sheet flow down, infiltration basin here, so the water goes down, it'll pool up in big storms if it soaks into the ground. Nice sand and gravels here, as you guys are aware, in Salvia, very nice soil in this area. And then everything is, as shown with these arrows here, it closed with the proposed building on this side, and all the parking lot is graded to drain back to this corner where it'll infiltrate that basin.
Is that just surface drainage in the background?
Yes, yes, she, yeah, so a sheet flows through here, there's no proposed structures. The swale is a grass well that comes down, so provides treatment. So this is our erosion sediment control plan, showing where we have check dams through the the swale here. The basin is right here. A rip wrap emergency spillway. This hatched rectangle here would be the construction entrance, so that's basically larger rock, foreign client of stone, and smaller, so as the trucks tracking dirt construction, it's knocked off the wheels prior to going onto the paved surface, which this paved surface is still on the applicant's property.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the logging operation in the rear, but it's not a problem currently to get in and out of there with the drainage as it is. I mean, you just got big trucks going down.
Right, so this is over by the, the wood line here, this darker line here. So we kept all the drainage off to the side, that allows still trucks can come through here and go to the back of the lot.
Okay.
And it would not impact. Currently, this area drains all to that, that wetland sheet flow, and then also to the wetland. Utility plan, so I was going through the checklist, we kind of went over the very basics. So there's gonna be a set the connection for the proposed garage over here. Water will be fed from the existing well of the existing building, so line running over here. That building will have an overhead wire to feed power to the building and a small propane tank to feed gas or heat. Similar on this side for the proposed contractor base, we have a proposed well, even just that building, a small propane tank also feeding through heat. And then the septic system out in the rear of the building here, which was already permitted by Forest Designs. And was included, I believe.
A design, we haven't seen a design for that.
For this one?
Yeah, for that.
Okay. So for, Forrest has designed, Tom Forrest has designed that plan for the proposed septic, and then he provided a letter, I believe, for the this existing septic.
Letter from Jeff Hert, actually. It started here from Jeff Hert.
Okay, yep.
But I don't know.
Yeah, so Tom Forrest has just designed them, okay. So Tom Hert provided the?
Yeah, Jennifer, yeah, because he put that.
Tom Forrest.
So it's the connection here that that letter is for, the other plan that went, that's been designed from Tom Forrest is for this proposed septic over here. Lighting plan. So pretty basic on lighting, we have wall packs, these are full cut off LEDs, so there's nothing shining above horizontal. Also facing just towards the parking lot, nothing towards the residential abutting, even though there's a lot of screaming on that side, and one wall back on the proposed garage. Picture of the light down here, and it shows the extent of the lighting, and if you look at these small numbers, that shows landscaping plan based on the number of spaces and then really perimeter parking along the hundred forty-four feet in front of the building. Comes up with a count for five trees, so we're showing five trees here. And then the trees that are required at a minimum of twenty-five feet between a residential zone and the commercial zone. We have, this is the fifty foot setback line here, and the green highlighted trees here is all, so it's roughly sixty feet on the north end and on the south end, fifty-four to forty-five.
Which remain.
All remain, yeah, the sort of thing that's in green here is what remains and is proposed, there's five proposed trees, and these all remain. Sediment erosion control details. I'd like to open up for his question.
Okay. Questions on the board?
The chain link fence that currently separates the pickets from, it's shown in phase one, is it, it will continue in phase one?
It continues, yeah, it's showing, so in this overall site plan, it's right here.
But then it looks like you remove it in right.
So this, this is, is phase two showing that. This is phase one that also shows.
Okay.
Both your names.
You should be showing us phase one and two. Tell him that there's going to be more construction than just phase one. Did I understand you correctly that phase two is two or three years away?
One, one to three is what they're looking at, so their, their priority now is to start and do the garage, the utilities for that garage, the gravel parking, the stormwater management system. This building and this parking, just right in front of those buildings, would, would be the phase two coming.
Considering the time lag between phase one and phase two. Isn't it a little premature to approve phase two?
That's not a question for him, that's a question for us.
Well.
So we can discuss that.
It's still out there.
Why would it be, because when Market Basket came in here, they could approve for that other separate building, and they never ever built it, and that was how long ago?
Before work.
Exactly. Mike?
I think, I also heard Mr. Noon say that, I think the phase one and phase two is really throwing people off more than it's intended. I think what he, what I heard him say was he wanted that phase one building and the swale and rest of that to qualify as substantial progress, thereby eliminating any clock that phase two structure would have, which sounds
That, yeah, that is what he said earlier in the press conference, and, and that makes sense, it coincides with that as well, and we have approved in fact, I think it's better for the planning board to get these plans like this, with phase one, phase two, phase three, it's gonna be, rather than coming in piecemeal on and on, because we can look at the whole project to see what's gonna go on, we know it's not gonna go in there for a couple of years, we know what's gonna go on, what's gonna be there. And any changes from it, they have to come back anyway. So I think it's better that we do see them at the same time.
Another sort of technical question, though, is we don't have in our, in our ordinance, the use of contractor bays. It's not a, it's not a listed use. And what do we do with that?
What we do, we, we can discuss it now early, but what we would do with it is that the building can be built, but the use is going in, they have to come before the planning board, everything that goes in.
So what he titles it doesn't make?
The building is there.
It's just a building.
And whatever the use is gonna be is in our document, and it can go in that one day, if another big one's in, it's not there, then we decide that, so.
Right, because each tenant can change based on availability.
That's how it would be. It is, yes, and that's how we're handling it.
Shouldn't need to see a plan for the septic for phase two.
So what? Probably not, we know the location of it, that's shown on the flat location, the exact plans would be gone over by, I'm sure Michael will be looking over on those plans before it was ever put in, but since they're located on the flat, they can't put it in a different spot that are coming back there, it has to go in that spot that's shown, or pretty much goes that spot on the flat. So that's really the only restriction that the planning board would have on it, where they change the location.
Mike would get a copy of those septic plans from the designer before it goes to safety, right?
Before it's saved, yeah, before it's created, obviously.
I guess I have a question for code. Was there any concern for fire about water supply for fire protection?
No. Okay, a couple items I have. Down in the lower, the existing building, let's see. It would be that, that one right there, now that is, there's a septic system that goes with that building, isn't that correct?
I know, I'm sorry, but I can't tell what you're talking about.
Okay, yeah, down in lower, I don't know where you're calling for that, so, yeah, but I think there's a system on the left hand side of that building there, there's
Yeah, there's a septic system's here, leach field is all the way through here.
That's, I thought, I thought, I'm looking over the plan, it looked like it was there, it wasn't really labeled on there, so it'd be
And there's one sink and one
Yeah, okay, well, it's, it's got its own tank, some leach field there, but it needs to be labeled on the drawing.
Yeah, so on our, on our existing conditions plan, we have the leach field shown right here.
It doesn't label it, though, does it?
It just shows It has LF plus or minus, which is the leach field.
Okay, all right.
It's this dash line to LF.
Okay, well, we'll take that as coming.
And then the tank and the, the overhead, so the tanks are right here.
Yeah.
I know it's, it's hard to see.
I know, I saw it on, on your, one of your drawings there when I looked them over before, but
Yeah, so there's two tanks here and here, and this, this will be true. So there's, there's no changes down.
No, but if you resubmit these, any change on the drawings at all, if you do them, if you were just to label it like you've labeled the other one up there, it shows the other one, tank and leach field, just so there's no question about it, just for future, you know, people wondering where the heck that is. And you have on note twenty-five, I forget, I think it's sheet three, note twenty-five, it talks about storage in the parking area. What is that, that for, because, you know, parking is for parking and storage is for storage. What exactly are we talking about?
Where, where are we talking here?
And it's sheet three. Sheet three, note twenty-five.
Yep. Loading and parking area. Loading and parking areas may serve as outdoor storage areas, so right in this area here, there's these longer spaces.
Yeah.
And then we have shown the self-storage containers here.
Oh, that's what you mean, you mean self-storage?
Or you mean, so, so those are like a container type, they're not a.
But they're existing, aren't they?
Building. Yes, there's existing here, yes.
So is that what that no refers to, the existing, onto that sort of?
It sounded like what you were talking about was that.
So I can help, sorry.
Yeah.
There is a constant flow of projects that go on, and so, for example, one of the cars is being worked on, but he has a couple of other projects, so they may be parked there, and it just, the projects turn.
Just, just making sure that the store doesn't take up the parking.
Oh, oh, yes.
Oh, no.
Right.
So that's not really what, what that's, what's happening there. Parking will be parking and storage of this one.
Correct.
And, let's see. And line six on the application about the proposed permitted use for the zoning. We've got repair garage, repair garage, body shop, bulk storage and distribution of large quantities of materials, liquid, solid or dashes intended for resale. What is that? What exactly does that? I don't know.
I don't, I assumed that when that application was made, that that was based on a set verbiage or code, I actually don't.
Oh, and just add it, because that talks about the use of proposed permitted use for zoning, and.
You know, there's, there's like bulk storage and distribution of large things like gasses, like the propane tanks out here on Route ten, that's what that means, that's what that talks about.
The material or solid would, would just be, if they were selling firewood or logs out of there, it would be the, yeah, it was a solid material.
Okay, because, you know, that's for large, you know, we're talking about some of those.
But there is no, there is no liquid or gases.
So that does not pertain to the site plan?
It doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
It's just less than.
Yeah, we could strike it out of there, but, alright.
It's a good question, and I actually thought about it too, but I didn't, I forgot to clarify, but I just thought it was like a standard verbiage for what that put in there.
You just want to see how sharp we were here, right?
Good job.
Were you requesting a waiver, waiver request letter, you know, waiving something?
No, it's based on the, whether we got the letter or not on the existing.
Oh, the septic, okay, that's what it found, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? So, just to sum it up, the phase one is going to be that gravel parking area, the drainage, the drainage swale and the garage.
Correct, everything depicted on S P one, sheet four of eleven, and it calls out phase one, so this is everything that would develop.
And phase two basically will consist of just that one building for the contractor.
Correct, and then parking, so.
Yep.
Phase one would build the driveway, they would end up with the spaces and probably.
Yeah, and septic and well as well going on.
Yes.
Alright, it's pretty straightforward, go ahead.
Oh, this is not that, it's just a thing about circulation, because I know there's a lot of like heavy equipment, whatnot parked there, that's I'm sure it moves around a lot, but I'm just thinking about fire access, okay, so the, the bit like, there's like a quantum cut kind of thing where there's, I don't know what it is.
That's off the side here, yes.
No, it's back, it's in the vicinity of the proposed new garage, it's back on the other end.
This one.
Yeah, it's next to that metal, I think it's called a metal shed.
You know, the payload or parking.
Yeah, yeah.
We need what the top, like the hoop shed.
I thought it was over on the other side.
There's a shed over here.
No.
And a metal shed, you're presented metal shed, that's it.
Okay. Just, just the thought that if there's, I'm sure there's a need to put heavy equipment on this site, and if it could be arranged so that that's not in, in the circulation around the buildings, because.
Right, it's not in the circulation, so there's backup to that one, but the hoop tar jet is over here off, off the side of the gravel parking. Dry aisles are twenty-five feet wide.
I was just there today, I couldn't get to the back, I couldn't get like around the doors because of yourself.
There's the metal, you know, right, so the metal sheds.
Right, yeah.
That one's the one to remain, that's the other one.
And the fire department generally signs off.
Okay.
Anyway.
But, but, but it's not, this is.
These are pretty substantial, twenty-five foot dry aisles, thirty-three point three, and it's very wide to get, easily get a fire truck around this.
So long as there's not a anyone.
Yeah, payload would get around easier in the fire.
In the middle of something, part.
Okay, any members of the public here for this one, any questions from the public anywhere? There are no other questions from the board, then I will close the public hearing, and we can deliberate. Any other questions for the applicant? I guess not, thank you, I'll close the public hearing. No, it's a pretty straightforward design, they've been in here a number of times before us, and they've always done exactly what they said they were going to do, they said they're going to present us with these drawings, and they have, and I don't have any problems other than the few things they straightened out, and I had questions on before, unless any of you have any.
Maybe we've signed now, list up everybody who's in there, so that, you know, that I'm sure it's helpful.
Yeah. And if, nothing else, motion to him, but.
Just going back to what was raised earlier on phase two, the time frame. It was mentioned that you approved a number of years ago Market Basket, or a building that hasn't been put up. Okay. But we have something here that they're saying, okay, this is what we're going to do, but we don't have a time, a timeframe on. This is right in conflict of what we're trying to establish.
With the, I know what you're talking about, we're trying to establish the, the one-year timeframe where the approval is null and void if they haven't done substantial improvement, improvement on the properties over that one year, right, so that, that's what you're talking about, but this one here, if, if they don't do their phase one, that would be their substantial improvement, then that would make it null and void unless they got an extension from us, but as far as the rest of the building goes, it's there is, I can't see of any reason why the board would not want them to put that building up in a phase two, even if it was two years from now, I mean, what difference is it going to make? You know, we've, the board has looked at it, they told what they're going to do, it showed where it's going to be, it's got to be there, it can't be moved. If it changes in some way or size or anything like that, they have to be back in front of the board. But other than that, this is like, we're deliberating here, I don't know, you know, we've got, we're deliberating on that, so if the building goes up in two years or even three years, I don't see the difference. Anybody else?
Why, why not approve both things as a one time?
Well, pretty much we have, but they're letting us know that it's probably going to take them a few years to do it. Other companies sometimes don't do that, and it takes them three years to do it anyways. But they're telling us upfront that they, they're going to take maybe a couple of years, maybe three years to do it. So it's no surprise to us.
The difference is, I think, they're talking about phases in terms of what they're how they're looking at their process, but not our legal phases in terms of how we look at.
That's kind of what I'm getting at, right here. This look at the project as one entity. And they're going to be putting up two buildings.
Yep.
And do away with the base part of it as you did with Market Basket. It wasn't a situation there where you approved Market Basket, but phase one and phase two, we're going to have this other building over here for some future date, why not look at it as one entity? Consider it as one entity, and they have up to five years, I believe it's the limit on it, to complete.
That's for the zoning change, that's, that's not completion of the project, that's just, just for any changes in the zoning to the town is a different thing, I think, that we're talking about there, but you know, we could look at it both ways, could just be one approval for the site plan. They chose to do it in phases because they knew they were going to do it in phases, which it really is not a problem, again. You know, we, like, some of the things we've approved, I don't know, those condos going in over in North Swansea over there. We approved those, but maybe a year ago, and it's going to take them one year, maybe two years to finish the whole thing, who knows, we don't put a time limit on, on how long it takes them to finish a project, we do put the time limit on when they have to start, and that's within that one year, otherwise they have to come back in front of the board.
That's what the conditions, so.
Probably beyond that.
I feel they just use phase one, phase two as their labels, we're, we're asking us to approve.
Yeah, you said right off the beginning that you wanted to get the whole thing approved.
Yeah.
Once, but they wanted two phases.
That's fine, that, either way, fine, it really doesn't make much of a difference there, that I can see, it's, it's a site plan, we looked at it, everything's done. I don't really see any problem with it. Any else, if, if not, then a motion to approve would be, or.
How move that we approved them?
Motion to approve by Michael York, seconded by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? We might want to put on there that, well, I think it's standard issue, isn't it, that the fire department looks at it every time, or is it like?
They, they already have, but we will.
Oh, they already have?
Yeah, but we will as the process goes through anyway.
Okay. Motion by Michael York to approve, seconded by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the same, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think this is a really interesting case, because you kept talking about having people that you consider that's substantial was to them.
Yeah.
They actually, I mean, they did, they, they didn't know where to apply it on that.
Right.
But by extension, by default, they did that, and that may be just part of the process of being on board, and having other potential applicants do it similarly.
Yeah, that's good, good tension, really, and pretty much is what happened here.
That's what happened.
Yeah, what I wanted, I was, I'm trying to interject on the deliberation. Put another back, was a lot of what that timeframe was, was actually lead times on that second building. So it's a pre-traffic ability, they reached out to the company and told them it could be a tier. So they're thinking, once they go through that, what they're calling a phase one.
Yep.
It's going to be tiered before they get, they'll build it.
Yeah, and that, that happens a lot, you know, lead time and things, yeah, lots of things happen for a building.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to item B. And that is a site plan review application for Horizon's Engineering, on behalf of New Car Nissan of Game, request a site plan review for construction of a new flex space building and associated site improvements for their dealership at five four four Menadon Highway.
Yes, I'm real big. He's just grabbing the user, I think. Do, do folks on Zoom have the ability to participate in meetings? The owners on.
I believe they do, they can, if they correct. Good evening, everybody. Yeah. You guys can hear me okay? Yeah, we can somewhat, but you might have to be aboard. Okay, can you guys hear me okay? And just call our attention to it, you know, if we can't hear them, thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah, and could you identify yourself for our record? Yeah, I'm Sean Hanlon, president of New Car Family Dealerships. Sean Hanlon. S H A W N, and the last name is H A N L O N. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, would you just go through the checklist?
Sure. Set through the checklist, so, name and address of owner is right here. Lot number. Right here, on the condition sheet. North arrows are on each sheet as well as fire scales. The scale, scales are different, there's a forty scale and a twenty scale. Name and addresses of the flat pair. Are here. Vicinity sketch provided here for context of the location. Name and address of the building, by the way, I know. Here. The physical features of the environment to oversee the site. So we have provided, you know, some context of buildings that Jason. Thank you. Perimeter boundary lines are provided, this dark line, which is the boundary as well as the size and acres and square feet. The existing structure on the site is shown here in white. With the square footage, on the existing condition sheet. Proposed. John, the post sheet, proposed structure here, existing structure. Also the square footage. The existing road is shown out here, which I'm not doing anything with. Let's see, access, so the existing access is right here, that's not being proposed to change. Parking and parking spaces, we've shown existing and the two sheets, as well as a summary here on the bottom of the existing condition sheet, knowing existing proposed parking. Let's see, landscape plans, so we had requested a waiver on the landscaping plan, which we can discuss due to the nature of the project, which is a building within the existing parking lot. And the nature of the car dealership, we're requesting waiver, we can discuss that. Let's see, existing proposed lighting. So the proposed light, lighting, it's hard to see, but the wall mounts are shown on this plan, and there's an illumination plan in your packet, it's a smaller sheet that shows the, the cut sheet for the, the downlights as well as the distribution. Let's see. Keep my spot here, okay. Natural features. The primary natural feature adjacent to the site and partially on the site is this wet one that moves through here. And the stream right here. The grading is shown on existing conditions, you can see the gray dashed lines with numbers, those are the existing contours and those grades are noted with the building. The building floor elevation and proposed grades are to remain the same parking area. Let's see. Water mains, culverts, fire hydrants. This is a well and septic site, so there is no water main or fire hydrants on the property, the well is right there. Culverts are shown, you know, drainage pipes are noted with a D mine type. Means providing water supply, as I mentioned, as well, the existing well is right, right here. That'll be continued to be used as the hose water source. Surface drainage patterns are indicated by the so, the existing condition. There's a break here, so fortunately the site is this way. Contours indicate flow in this direction here, and then this portion of the site moves this way. Let's see. Copy of certification by a licensed septic designer. I was going to do this before the meeting, and I think that we did not provide that. I was going to do this before the meeting, and I think that we did not provide that, I don't believe. There, there is an existing septic right here, we were showing, we are showing the proposed tank relocation. And so that's all going to have to go before the town for septic approval. We will, because of the addition to the building, have to design and file a construction approval for a replacement system for the septic, but it will not have to install as a provision in the, in the rules for that, in this, in this case, so that'll all be filed with with Mike, prior to going to DES. Kind of touched on the, the existing proposed wastewater system, so leach field under the parking lot in this location. And this tank, there's an existing tank here that's going to have to be reloaded, well, a new tank will be installed because the existing, the other proposed building will be on that, that tank location. That tank flows into existing pump station here, and it's pumped over. On site well, we touched on that, and the radius, the hundred foot radius is right there. Soil survey. We provided the NRCS soils report with the package as well, but the these darker dashed lines indicate that the radiation of different soil types, the soil types are noted here in this type of font with the number and the type, the description. In each area. Existing conditions plan doesn't note any restrictions or easements on the property. And architectural plans. You have architectures. Rendering and floor plans provided. That's a rendering. Floor plan. If we can go into detail if you'd like.
That's the checklist, that's it?
Yeah.
See, let's discuss the landscape plan waiver.
So in this rendering, is this truly what it looks like today? There actually are plantings along this, this section of the structure? I don't remember seeing those.
Yeah, I don't know that there are.
So this isn't really what it looks like?
Not, I don't think there are plantings there. I think you might be right about that.
So, so we should disregard that aspect of this. There's no landscaping on this site that I remember.
There is.
Is it where?
Yeah, it was over the other day.
In that front area, that sort of curved area? No.
There's landscaping in the center island here.
Right. I'm just checking.
Yeah. Yes, the architects sometimes take liberties with the renderings, I guess, but.
And I, I, I don't agree with the reasoning, and this is just sort of for the record, because you're talking about basically doubling the size of the building. And the justification is that, that there's no new previous service plan for this project. I don't think that's, I don't want to go on record as saying that's, that warrants no landscaping, okay? But given the nature of this, the use, and how the building's going to be accessed and whatnot. It'd be nice if you had landscaping in that front area of the building, as is shown, you know, on the rendering. That would be really nice, but.
Well, that's.
That's right.
Any, any other comments on the landscaping plan? Because they're asking for a waiver, we need to take a vote on it, whether we're going to give them a waiver on that or not, because they did not provide it. For the landscaping plan. So, the motion would be in order to grant the waiver or not? What are they?
I make a motion to grant the waiver.
Motion by Brandon to grant the waiver that they do not need to provide the landscape plan.
Oh, but, but do we consider fencing to be part of landscaping?
I don't think so. I suppose you could, but no, I don't think so.
Second to motion.
Second. Go ahead, it's seconded.
Okay.
Now it's discussion phase.
Okay, because everyone, I don't know if we looked at this before, then did a site visit way back. And the, the neighbor, it's, it's.
Down to the right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have they, have they touched base with you about concerns?
They're here, I think.
Not with me.
Isn't that you? Yes, they're here.
I'm Joseph Anishav, this is my wife.
Okay, because there's the fence now, that white fence.
There's that.
That's for the Nebraska.
They were supposed to get trees installed years ago, I don't know what ever happened.
I think they're more like shrubs and trees.
They were guaranteed trees going here and there.
They're in the butters. Side, we'll get into that, we're just doing the approval part, we're in the middle of the waiver there, and Michael York did the second on the, on the waiver. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the same, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. See, anything else they are going to? They're going to provide a replacement design for the septic system, which is standard issue, what they generally do, so nothing else on that, so. Looks like it is all complete, any, any other questions on the completeness of the application? If not, motion to accept the application as complete is in order.
Oh, yeah. I'll update that motion.
Okay, motion by Brandon to accept the application as complete and move on to public hearing? Okay, seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the same, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now we can move to public hearing, I will open up the public. Now you can make your presentation as to what's going on here.
Okay. So we touched on some of the existing conditions, but I'll just kind of breeze over them again here, so the main entrance is here, obviously. The, the gray hashed area is paved, parking and, and, you know, vehicle display area for the dealership. There is a gravel parking area here as well, so this is the existing building, it's, it's twelve thousand one hundred and ninety square feet. The main entrance is right there. So we touched on wastewater, you know, existing is here, leak field here. Drainage pattern is, is split somewhere in this area, so a portion of the site comes down into this stormwater feature, and then majority of the site makes its way into this discharge point down the corner. So we moved to the proposed site plan. Which shows what's being envisioned here, which is, which is a building addition here, which is nine six hundred square feet. So this will allow, there's also going to be a renovation of the existing building. So this will allow more mechanical lifts, repair space, primarily in addition. There are existing floor drains with a holding tank inside the building, which is typical of that kind of use, will be continuing that. Those holding, the holding tank is right there. So we'll be moving, or installing a new holding tank, so that gets, gets registered with DES, and it's pumped regularly. Essentially, there's no discharge. That holding tank.
Will the existing tanks continue to be used?
They'll be discontinued because the building's going to sit on top of that basin, so it will definitely be removed. Tomorrow, it's just for that. Let's see, so touched on wastewater, so this is the new septic tank location over to the pump station. So the roof has a slate pitch in either direction, so the ridge line is split. There's a gutter system with downspouts that are collected into these cleanout structures, so this half is proposed to come over here and tie into that existing drainage structure, which will go to the stormwater feature there. This half is proposed to have a similar setup and tie into the existing drain infrastructure here, so the existing building has a similar setup with, with gutters and downspouts, they're routed like that. Will be tying into that system.
Are you saying that system exists already to the retention pond, it looks like?
Right, so existing infrastructure, there's a catch basin here, a drain manhole and pipe.
And that whole pond, or depressed area that exists already?
Yes.
That's been designed?
That was, that is an existing condition on the site.
It is.
Yeah, so there's no increase in impervious surfaces. There's a minor shift in the, in the areas that are contributing to the two discharge points. It's slightly less, and this one's slightly more by two to four percent, so it's a very small adjustment to the way the stormwater is distributed on the site.
Does the water from the parking lot that exists today flow into that?
Right, so on, on the existing condition.
I guess my point is, I just wonder if we're introducing more water to that basin?
Right, so that's what I was, so I was pointing out, is it's actually going to be less water into that basin by a small amount, it's almost the same. But, but yes, a, a good, like a portion of this parking lot, like right in here, there's a breakpoint, and then right in here, there's a breakpoint that goes this way now, yep. So, the building will displace some parking. Which, so if you look at, you know, right now, there's parking right here, there's twenty spaces in this location. Those will be eliminated as part of the project. There is room for backing aisles, so these will remain along the perimeter. And we've shown new parking here, 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 and here. To balance that out and add parking back in, it is a, a net loss, but there's an excessive amount of parking on the site. And so we far exceed the number of parking spaces required for, for customers, and there's a, a lot of storage for inventory. So, let's see, I can, any questions on this, this plan before I flip over?
Okay, any, any questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead then.
Are you decreasing lighting or increasing on this end? Will there be any change? In the amount of poles, lights, something like that?
Right, so we're not sorry, let me just make sure I'm speaking correctly, we're not introducing any pole lighting, the only lights are are downlights, so it's wall mounted, like wall packs on the building. And, just checking, I don't think we have there is one on this end of the building, and then a few on the back and a few on the front.
And they are what height?
Twelve. They're on the building, and I believe they're twelve feet high.
Are they directed straight out, or are they?
They're directed straight down. Down.
By pole cut off. Could I get your name for the record, you folks? Joseph Anishavitz.
Thank you.
And hey. And hey.
Anishavitz.
Anishavitz. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
On the lighting, the concern that we have, we live there more than thirty years, okay? The poles are very high, the poles in the front, we, we live directly across the street, okay? The Anishavitz over here, yes. But anyway, the pole is very high, the, the front ones seem to be directed straight down and don't seem to cause much of a problem, but the lights in the back seem to be directed toward the highway toward our house. So our house now they keep the lights on all night long too, so our house is well lit, our entire, I can walk in dark at midnight and see perfectly clear. Okay, it's that bright. Previous employees and family have said, asked the previous owner to dim the lights in the evening after nine thirty. And he did that for several years, then gradually had, I don't know, computer problems or whatever, but he stopped doing it. And he, you know, called an occasion, they changed, you know, they would fix it for a while, then it stopped. But now, for the last several years, including the new ownership, the lights are all bright, and they stay on twenty-four hours, you know, all night long, every night. Okay, it's bad enough on Friday, but in the last month or two, they had some lights that were infected. And it's sort of like a strobe light, and it's hard to sleep. But right now, they, they must have fixed it, though, the two lights that were bad, but we have concerns about the lighting at night.
Can I just ask, I'm just curious, so, so you mean in the back, you mean some of the lights that are full mounted?
The middle layer is the worst, because it's been there at our house. The high lights don't, probably.
Not as much.
The front ones seem to be directly straight down. They added that it's just, and it never, it never lets up.
These are still the pole lights you're talking about, correct?
They have a set, they have a same secondary set, and then they have a high set. I think that increased a few years ago, because they used to just have highs. I don't, I can understand why they want to shine a product.
Yeah.
But these are aimed, they don't, I don't know if there's a way of
I think there is, we were through this before one time on a site plan on this same property, and I think they had said they could shield that, and I thought they were going to shield that. Maybe it didn't. I think.
They ended up shielding the front ones, from the front and some towards McGrath.
Maybe that's.
Side, and I think, and I think you guys may be victims of, you know, good neighbors. And after Mr. McGrath is not a good neighbor, but he's got no qualms about following me when there's an issue, including the blinking light thing you guys had. And I called Tony right away, and Tony took care of it, as you, as you noted.
Yes.
And I appreciate you taking that on yourself and working out with the neighbor, it's always my preferred method for a lot of reasons. But you're always welcome to call me as well, if you wish. But it's like, I'm the guy you call when you're unhappy with your neighbor. But it's, it, it, it is something that, I mean, it's a great opportunity to have it, I'd like you guys to give it, so that this young man can hear and bring it back, so they can get it fixed hopefully once and for all.
We've never complained too much, I think we've been actually.
I've never mentioned that.
No, no, I, I, well, actually, we're, we have a sense of proof about that road, if you've lived there long enough. There's the people that go to work, and then there's the things that happen at night, and we've had some strange experiences, he's giving gas to people that the place is closed, and I don't have gas. He's, they all have a guy in Australia, so correct, and he's repairing it, doesn't want a road, and there's a couple over there freezing, waiting for cars here, and we went over and, and went and, or, you know, offered, you know, I mean, we're, we are the neighbors again, so. And I don't care tolerance, it's, it's just I wanted to really be sure there wouldn't be increased you know, lighting.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's not going to be any new pole lights for sure, and Mike, if there's, if there was a, a simple way to do cutoffs, I'm sure that they'd be open to that too. You know, you did a shielding on the other ones.
We should probably get some shielding and things like that.
I didn't know that was possible.
You probably should, and also, as a condition of that site plan, a prior site plan, it was that either the lights are going to be dimmed for a certain length over the night, or on a timer somehow, or half of them are going to be shut off, I do recall going through that whole thing, that they're going to have certain lights on, certain lights off at different times, and it's probably in our records for that last site plan. And anyway, it doesn't expire, it's still in effect, you're correct, yes. Yes, it was, but it didn't, like Mike just said, it does not expire, it goes with the site.
Rules the rule.
So Mike, if you can get us that, I'm sure we'd be happy to.
I have another question too. On the previous site, and I remember they talked about trucks coming in and going around the north side of the building, and being able to, you know, drop off whatever, and then circle around to the south, and then back around, is there still going to be room for trucks to do that? It doesn't appear to be that. Because otherwise it kind of bolt up again.
Yeah, I, that, that isn't something that was asked of us to look at, so I, I'm not, we could look at that, I'm not sure, but they will, I mean, they will need to get trucks around there, I'm sure.
Let's ask, ask the owner, he's still online, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, that, that lot certainly provides plenty of room to get trucks in and out. Regardless of the size of the footprint of that building, I mean, that's, that's a lot more space than we're normally used to dealing with, to getting trucks in and out of parcel of land. So I mean, they.
We're talking about the backside of that new building, correct?
I'm not, I'm not necessarily sure they have to go on the backside of the building. I guess that's, that's the part I'm not understanding, I guess.
I guess what we're talking about was a flow through the building, where they would enter from Route twelve. Go up on, we'll say, the north side or the left as we're looking at the site plan, left side of the building, go around the back of the building, come out the front, rather than having to turn the thing around. Is that your normal flow through there?
I believe that that is the flow for the parts delivery. But the parts delivery trucks usually, I was thinking more of the lines on car carriers dropping off vehicles.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like to me, but is that, that's not your normal flow for car carriers?
I don't believe so, Tony is at the meeting, is he not? Well, is Tony there?
Yes, sir. Oh. I guess he's online.
Yeah, so you're a hundred percent correct, they go on the left side of the building and they load and unload in the dirt lot away from the customer parking.
And then they what, they turn around there or they go around the building, that was the question, do they still go around the building and come out the front?
Yeah, so they, they pull head in into the dirt lot, they back up and they pull out the same way they came in, they don't go around the building. Because technicians are pulling cars in and out of that service bay. So they don't inter, interfere with customers or technicians. And, 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 yeah, so they just pull, pull out the same way they come in.
Okay, Tony, Tony, you should introduce yourself, you've been the general manager there for quite a long time at that location.
Yes, sir, hello, everybody.
Here, for the record, your name is Tony, what?
Percoco.
Percoville?
Percoco. C O, C O.
R C A.
C O, C O.
B R C O, C O. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, yes.
What time of day do the trucks arrive, the car carriers?
Let's let him finish the presentation and we'll get into the, the nuts and bolts of the whole thing.
Yeah, I can just touch on the, the, the building as well, so. This is a rendering of what it looked like from the, from the road. So, you know, the exterior gets a, a facelift as well of the existing building and then this is the addition section. It's the floor plan, so. The. Extend of the existing building ends here, so this is existing, this is proposed, but this, this, this area gets all reconfigured and renovated as well. You can see the, the lifts for the mechanics. Two hand wash, car base, or car wash base. And there's. Vehicular door here and here for the addition space and there's also. Vehicles can come in here. On these, and these two doors and this door, so there's two doors on each side of the existing block. One back here and one on the side. We did make one adjustment at the request of the planning to add a door here. So your plan may not reflect that, I do have some, let me, I said, too, if you'd like, but this is. The intent to provide an additional means of, of address, it's not required by code, but it was a good suggestion, so we did make that adjustment.
Yeah, it's good, you have two. Doors could, uh, from a new building into the existing.
There are, yes, correct, two.
Fire rated doors closing, shutting.
Isolate that.
Yeah.
Looks like there is a, yes, fire rated door, yeah. We will, what's that? Oh, it's, yeah. And then these are elevation views of. Side of the building. So, you know, this is the, this is the front on the, on the roadside, so entrance here. The, the vehicular doors, I mentioned it in the person door there. This is the back of the building, so you're looking at it as if you're standing in the back of the existing block of the building is here, this is the addition. And then, this is the side over by the gravel parking lots on the north side, on this side of your site plan. What the building will look like there with the, the front entrance there and this is. The, I guess, south end. Entrance kind of in the distance to that elevation. I think that. Covers the plans and I'd be happy to, you know, further respect whatever you want to feel like.
Concludes the presentation and Steve, you had a question?
Yes. What type of day do the? Car carriers, the delivery cars usually arrive?
I'm gonna defer to Tony on that one.
I'm sorry, I didn't fully hear the question.
What time of day do the truck, car, the car carrying trucks arrive?
At, at any point in time during the day. I don't, there's not a designated time that they arrive.
Two o'clock in the morning?
I, I, I wouldn't see them if they pulled in at two o'clock in the morning, it's, it's, it's possible that, that. It, it, they could and they, they drop it off, it's, it's unusual that it would be around that time, but sometimes we show up to work and cars are there and they put the keys in, in the drop box. Most of the time, we receive the car during the days of operation.
Whereabouts, well, whereabouts on the property do the motor vehicle deliveries arrive?
I think you described that as it would come in and go this way to the gravel lot area, right? They would pull in that way, unload and then back here, head out.
Could you address the staff comments that they, you see those?
Yeah, I don't.
Some of those are pretty important.
A bar your copy? So horn and strobe fire protection system on proposed buildings, I'm sure that we will get through that, the building permit. Identification of bulk fuel storage and capacities on the plans. We can, we didn't, we've not shared those on board, so we have to provide that.
So, we'll show the location, we want it to be labeled, make sure what's in there.
Yeah.
Because that, that's been scenario is fuel pump, correct?
Is there a here? I believe that, I believe that's correct, yeah. Yeah, we do know thousand gallon propane tank there, but I don't think, yeah, there's. We could, we could certainly do that as a condition. Details regarding destination, use and contents of holding tanks for the addition. So, I can, I can explain that. The trench drain will be here, you know, in the middle of the mechanic's bay. And primarily used for the hand wash of the cars. So, in the mechanic's bay. It's not gonna see a lot of, of liquid, it's not like they're washing cars in there. But it is, it is the low point in that, so it'll be.
It says connecting car wash bay drainage.
Correct, there's two hand wash bays, so it's not like a car wash and drive, there was a bunch of water, but it's just somebody with a hose, right? And so, yes, that's what, that's what it'll be and so that water, they do it now, they, they pump it every few weeks and it gets called off, kind of like your septic tank. I dispose of a similar process. Distribution and management plan for stormwater. I think we've touched on that in terms of what's being proposed.
So, we. Actually, I don't, I mean, you know, it's what I'm nervous about. What I'm nervous about is this wasn't here. In regards of how it was pitched, Steph and I kind of had a good time, we were looking at, we were looking at this thing on Google. Earth and, of course, the nature of the, of this type of operation. The cars go in different places, so some days the cars were, were straight and then there were, there were months where the cars were kind of diagonal, what does that really mean? Well, to me, it really means that when the water's running through here and it's hitting all those obstructions, it's changing the flow of the water. And then here, we've got that happening. And really, especially for the McGraths and the future owners of this property, we really wanna make sure that there's some stamp verification. That this, this is sized right, not that there's two percent more, but it's sized right, period. Because times have changed, standards have changed. I'm just a little bit concerned that now that we've got to concentrate a little, that all this roof, we've got all this stuff that's being directed to a spot, it's coming out of pipe. There's no more hidden tires, there's no more hidden obstructions, there's no more where it might go, where it might not go. It's all going in here and we know that for fat, so I'm just. Make, I'm just a little bit nervous about this, I wanna make sure that it's sized right because. I watched a lot of guys size some pretty rough stuff lately and based on the current standards. Still get to the top, so.
How would that be increased going into there when, isn't that paved currently right now?
It is paved, but it's.
All that water and the pavement right now, where is it from?
Depends how it gets in its way, I guess is my point, now there's nothing in its way anymore, we know where it's being captured and it's being directed straight there no matter what. And I'd just like to see, I think it's. I think it's not unreasonable for them to bring the math that this works.
Oh, I agree, I was just curious.
Yeah, and we didn't provide a drainage report, we did delineate subcatchment areas and ran it through HydroCAD to look at. What the distribution was, right, so we're confirming that it was basically a very similar split in the stormwater and we weren't increasing significantly either discharge point. What we, what we didn't do and we don't really have information to really, yeah. We would have to do some investigations to how this. Stormwater pond was constructed, designed to construct.
It was on a previous site plan.
And I did ask for that as.
Yeah, I looked earlier, but I couldn't find it.
Couldn't find it.
Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna, we gotta try a different building and go. Guys, guys, find us a little place.
Okay, well. I don't know if the, the board can. We would be happy to do that as a condition, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly how you can handle that, but we could, we could. We can look at that if, if that's a, if that's a constraint, I mean, typically we're looking at making sure that we're not increasing rates of runoff. For the current, you know, the predevelopment condition, which is what we've tried to accomplish here. Labeling of scale on the site plan pages, I. Think we have bar scales. On all of our sheets, is there some, is there something missing? Bar scale there.
I think on sheet C two, it says it's forty feet per inch and actually it's twenty. On the drawings that I looked at anyways, on, I think it was on C two, oh one.
This is twenty. And this is forty, this, this is a bigger view.
So the other one I looked at, maybe it wasn't in these here that we have at the town hall, I'm gonna need to check, make sure I'm not.
That's twenty, yeah. You're good. Okay. All right, so, and then, then all, all local permits required. Right, so we will need obviously building permit, septic permit. And then we'll need to register the holding technical D E S, that's not a local permit, that'll be required as well.
Okay, questions from the board, yes, sir?
Further comment about our operators at night, they do show up at twelve, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning. Sometimes they are independent contractors, I know it's very difficult to control them, because they really are independent. But they might park directly across the street on the road and try to unload one or two vehicles. And so, the engine is running, they never shut them off for one, two or three hours while they're in the road. Or sometimes they go into the lot in the back and they might, you know, sleep for a while. They're not supposed to do that, it happens very rarely, but it does happen, okay?
It is actually illegal for them to offload on the road.
Yeah, but it happens, but I, I have never seen an accident, maybe one.
You, you can call police department.
Well, I've taken it before, Chris, but these are independent guys, they don't do, they don't care, they come from all over. They're all different sizes, we've got big grid, you've got shorter guys, you've got the one, one person operators. And, I don't know. But the other day, they were all in the rain and they were lined up with the yellow books and I.
The laws and the rules are already in place for that, that cover that, I mean, yeah, the planning board can say, yeah, no unloading and all that type of stuff, but the law's already there.
They don't know, these guys, they don't know.
Just one other question, at one, one of the previous planning meetings, there's this, that little swampy area with a, somewhat of a pond at the north side. That was supposed to have been made into a fire pond of some sort.
The new, the new plan worked out, we are protected, they were able to come up with a different scheme to separate the structures. That's part of the fire doors and that set stuff, so that pond doesn't have to be built and that well hasn't, but doesn't have to be disturbed at all.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? So let's see, we have a few items here concerning the lighting. And actually, to go back to what was approved prior on the lighting, have to research that too. And the approvals there, but you need to label the fuel farm, I think is what we talked about tonight, correct? And also, size the detention pond, or actually certify the detention pond. The other, it came up here. So, I guess the question is. Can you do that in two weeks? If you can, you know, in two weeks, I, I would prefer you do in two weeks and we continue the meeting until then, because if you have to change something on there for that drainage and stuff, you'll have to come back and. Do the whole thing over again, if you don't, then it's done and you're all set.
Yeah, can we just talk about what you're asking us to do with the stormwater?
We're asking you to certify that, that, that. Existing detention pond can handle what's there now and what's, what's asked of it now with the new building as well, but basically what's there as well. Is it sized for that, I guess, maybe what, twenty-five year storm, hundred year storm?
Well, that's, that's my question, right, is it, what, what are we designing to? Because I, I don't know what the design intent was for this, we could check the capacity and report that to you.
Well, we usually have you report for fifty year storms and, and I think twenty or twenty-five years storms, I think is how we generally do it, Mike, do you have any?
You can come down to us to, to, to look up the old minutes, look through the file and I don't think it would be, let us know if we're able to design it to whatever it was designed to do then, just pictures, right?
Uh, yeah, that's a good point, yeah, that's a fair point, yeah.
We'll just make sure that we're meeting the previously approved intent, right? Okay, and so that two weeks is a little bit contingent on how quickly we can get the.
I'll, I'll work, I'll work really hard tomorrow to find whatever it is, like, I, I can, I can find it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I think we would certainly.
You could do that.
Prefer, I mean, two weeks, it's much better than a month, so, yeah.
Is this functionality affected by trees from the?
They'll have to certify it, no, I mean, they'll have to take a look at it and see what's there and if it's filled in or. What, but they'll get the original drawings that it was designed as or, or to, yes, ma'am?
Is this washing business a noisy operation, I would assume it isn't, but it's not a noisy.
Vehicle washing?
Yeah.
I mean, it's inside the silly. It's just a hand, it's just like a hose, hand hose.
There's not a lot of water moving.
Correct.
And that, that tank you have out back, you know, you're moving that storage tank out back there and is that watertight for as far as groundwater getting into it? And how's that, it is, right, it's sealed, okay, yeah. So, how about that, we continue the public hearing until our next meeting, which is, and I wrote it down someplace. Is the twenty-eighth of March. And in the meantime, if you could put a few things on the drawings like the fuel farm there and just get the information on engineering. Any other questions about the board?
Oh, yes, yeah, what's Sean's last name?
Yeah, Sean Hanlon, H A N L O N. And if you could discuss the lighting there as far as maybe. Toning it down a little bit there. In the front. And Mike, while you're researching that, if you come across the provisions for the timing or whatever, I think it was like every other light was put on, it was something like that. It should be in the notes, okay? Anything else from the board? If not, then a motion to continue the public hearing until our next meeting without further notice. Anything else from the board? If not, then a motion to continue the public hearing until our next meeting without further notice, which is March twenty-eighth. Would be in order. Motion to that effect by Michael York, seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate this thing, aye?
Alright.
All opposed? Okay, we'll see you in a couple weeks. Okay, thank you.
Thanks to all of you, we appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings us to item C. Item C is a site plan review application, Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Asher Construction LLC. They request a site plan review for the construction of a contractor-based facility at Zero Safford Drive. And for the record, John Noonan, Fieldstone Land Consultants here on behalf of Asher Construction LLC is the applicant. Here is a site plan review to Zero Safford Drive. The contractor base. And I'll start by walking through the application checklist.
Great, thank you.
Name and address of owner. Both shown, both on the. Applicant and landowner on the cover sheet, and on each section of our title block on each. Tax map and lot number also shown on the front cover sheet and each title block. North Arrow written in graphic scale, so. North Arrow graphic scale. And writ scale. Name and address of the plot preparer, so on each sheet is Fieldstone Land Consultants. The vicinity sketch, so both on the cover sheet, and then each site plan sheet, here we have a locust map. Names and addresses of all budding landowners, so they're shown here for the budding landowners, both their tax map lot, and then name and address of the butters, which match our butters list. Physical features and land uses of land within two hundred feet of the site. So this is a little bit smaller scale than existing conditions, but within two hundred feet are the existing buildings. So this has been at Oak Highway, Safford Drive, so this would be the fairgrounds. Along Route twelve here, Banana Highway, a building on the budding lots. Physical features such as wetlands, pavement surfaces, and utilities along this area. Very minimal amount of bulk directly. Perimeter boundary lines and the lot area in square feet and acres. So we have the acreage, six point eight acres, square feet below. Lot line shown outlined here in orange. The shape, size, height, location of existing structures on the site and those that are proposed. So there are no existing structures on the site, and our proposed structures are these three buildings here. Identification of access from the site, public streets, site distances from the access points, curb cuts and proposed changes if any. So there is an existing paved curb cut that is off of Safford Drive. That was put in when Safford Drive was built. This was, I think, originally a staging area for construction when they did. The road improvements here, so they had a lot of construction footwork in here, so. They had originally put in this paved entrance, the driveway uses that existing curb cut. So there is no change in site distance, which exceeds two hundred feet in both directions. And then location and number of parking and loading spaces. So we have it called out with the circles here, a number of spaces, which are all in front of the units, and then in between. Handicap spaces is two, and we have fifty-five pool parking spaces. Landscape plan. So landscape plan, most of it being retained. And then some, some plantings that are shown here. Location, type, and nature of all existing proposed lighting. Each building has a wall pack, light, LED, downcast. A little dark here to see, but each light is shown, and then the outline of the, as far as each light goes. So nothing faces in a budding property, certainly not towards any residential lighting, and these are full cut off LED fixtures that are shown here. The natural features such as water bodies, ledge out, cropping wetlands. So as highlighted here, these edges of blue are the wetlands, there's a substantial amount of wetlands on the property. So, and then on to the buddy, you see it's a, it's a large wetland structure that all continues down. Well. Existing and proposed grades, so graphic contours at five foot. Existing. Existing contours being the lighter dashed lines here, those are the existing contours. And then the proposed, proposed contours, as you can see around the space, are these heavier lines. And then also through the parking, these proposed contours and their spot rates. Size and accurate location of all existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, and fire ponds. So both are. Proposed utility sheet and also our existing condition sheet, we show utilities that are existing and proposed. So water sewer that runs down Safford Drive and. Our proposed connections for other utilities such as electrical. Existing down, overhead, electrical down Safford Drive as well. Means of providing water supply, so there's a existing stub for water that was done when Safford Drive was done, so that the site wound up connecting to that water supply that will be visible water. Surface drainage patterns. And drainage plan. We basically have. What, there's low arrows here, so showing the grade, one and a half percent down, down between this way, and this is a. Closed drainage system, so it's flowing through a pipe, and then out into our drainage system, and then out of the pipe. Here, the site generally drains from the east to the west, away from Safford Drive. A copy of certification of a licensed septic designer, so that's not applicable, we're gonna be connecting to municipal sewer. No septic system proposed. Location and type of proposed sewage disposal system, so as mentioned, we're connecting to the septic sewer that's in, there's no septic. There's an existing sewer manhole be connecting to municipal sewer here. And location of existing and proposed onsite well showing seventy-five foot radius. That's also not applicable because we're onto municipal water, so we haven't checked out, that should say in our application. Soil survey data from Chester County soil. So it's shown both. This point of grading. Then our existing conditions, this is the subdivision that was approved in twenty twenty-two. Three lot subdivision that also shows the soils further from our lot, so our subject lies, this lot here, it shows the soils down through this. Section of Safford Drive. Location of an existing or proposed easements, deed restrictions, and/or covenants. So anything on the survey plan by Humvee Survey had listed anything, but there is no deed restrictions on the subject lot. And architectural plans, so we had submitted a. Elevation drawing. What the buildings would look like, and then also a building footprint. So in these plants here, shared entryways, so it would be like a storefront type glass doors, and then overhead bay doors. So these would be targeted for contractors where they would rent a unit, maybe have a small office and that. So they would share entryway to each unit on the side, and then they each have their own bay garage door. And then control floor plan. So this shows a five unit, and then there's, so there's two five unit buildings and one six unit building, so the six unit building has an additional.
Good, that's out of, any questions on the completeness of the application? If not, then a motion to accept the application as complete is in order. Motion by Brandon to accept the application as complete and move to public hearing. Seconded by Michael York, intended for the discussion. Indicate the saying, aye?
Aye.
And we're moving to public hearing, I'll open up the public hearing. And you may.
So public sewer goes all the way up there?
Yeah.
Is that all logged in? It's not even logged in.
It's not logged in, Mike.
We mapped out the entire.
Oh, it's not in the G I S?
So I, like, second guess my.
Maybe we should hold payment to the engineers then. Because that wasn't put in there too long ago.
Yeah, when they built Safford Drive, it is water sewer.
Yeah.
NanoTech Carolina ties it, that's source.
Public hearing is open, and you may.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna start on the existing conditions to show where we are on property, so. This lot, so Safford Drive was built maybe fifteen years ago or so, and then. This subdivision was done in twenty twenty-two into a three lot subdivision. This is the subject lot here, which fronts, they have a small amount of frontage here, a hundred and four feet, that is directly under Route twelve, Banana Oak Highway. The other frontage following along the Safford Drive here. So you have the fairgrounds here, clear water pool is right here on this corner of Safford Drive. Just to give everyone an idea, right where we are. I think a lot of people are familiar with this area.
And let me interrupt you for a second.
So I found a discrepancy where you guys have one acreage on, labeled on your plans, but we have different acreage. So for us.
Yep, so the subdivision sheet showing six point eight acres?
Yeah, ours is more like five something.
Saw that it had five point five one, but there's somewhere with two point five acres in the description.
Correct.
So is that from the tax map?
Yeah.
So you have the subdivision. You have a copy of the subdivision survey, correct?
Yeah.
That would be more accurate than the tax maps would be, in my opinion.
Exactly, yeah, so we would have to go off of the subdivision that was approved, and this was a licensed land survey, it would be Humvee. Humvee survey and design, so this was the stamped plan, so this acreage and, but delineations of these bounds.
Is all surveyed.
Is all surveyed, so it has to go off of six point eight acres, so if the tax map has to update it.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
So this lot, as I kind of mentioned before, when they built Safford Drive, this was kind of a staging area. So they had equipments, they, they put a lot of their sand, some base grapples, everything else was stored up here. So there's a, there's a high spot up here, pretty nice soils up in this area. I think as most people know, this is a pretty far, large wetland complex out behind here that goes down along Route twelve, and then also following Safford Drive all the way down. So the proposal is in place. Three buildings for contractor base, two buildings that have five units, one building that has six units. Parking based on two units per, one, per unit, and then two eighty-eight compliance spaces. So this is a different orientation than a survey plan, but this is the high point here. Outlined in blue is that large wetland complex here that would go down towards Route twelve and kind of follow Safford Drive parallel. So everything's up here on the high side. This green outline would be the extent limit of work. The proposed tree line, so where this proposed tree line is, is outside of the wetland lines here, so there's no wetland impact. I know there was a comment in the review about the driveway with a wetland, but, but there's no impact, and that is on an existing curb cut, and it's paved access in past the property line, so we're utilizing that same area in this, making it twenty feet wide, twenty-five feet wide, which is, it's about twenty-three, twenty-twoish now. So. No wetland impacts, we're looking at a stormwater treatment system out in the back, so that was one of the other comments was. How the stormwater would be handled and how it would impact wetlands, so. Everything is draining down, as shown on our grading plan. Goes into more detail on how stormwater would be handled. So draining down, catch bases in the middle of the drive aisle. Drive aisle up here as well, connecting to the catch bases coming down, picking up any of the flow along that this wetland comes down, flows. Will be brought in into this head wall and culverts. Be connected in, and then it will come out back, and this would be a detention pond that would hold and release to match, so that the proposed conditions of this amount of impervious area between buildings, the pavement areas, would be offset. So the water coming out of being detained here would be matching, or it's actually less than what the existing condition is with the, the buildings there. So it's not gonna impact the wetlands in any way.
So is that a little flatter?
Yes, yeah, so what it does is water builds up in it, and there's a. Orifice cut at different elevations based on a two, ten year, fifty year storm. So it lets it out slower, lower velocity than what the existing condition is.
And what's it into, where it runs?
It would outlet to a river rap apron here, and then it bleeds out basically. Downstream here, and then the, eventually, so the wetland is, is down in here. So eventually gets to the wetland, it's been treated for contaminants between the swale out front here, and then also for long-term detention in that. So that's the creative drainage plan utilities, so. This was kind of, there is a water stub out, so when they built Safford Drive, a lot of this was planned that these lots would be coming along for development. So there is a manhole placed here, we believe there could actually be a stub out of that manhole already.
I was gonna ask you if there's a stub.
I think, we think there is, so that's something we're gonna have to investigate. It did say about, one of the comments about verifying our capacity here. The town, as, and then other past projects has well above capacity with the treatment plant. But as we apply for building permit as they go forward, we could certainly provide any information on, on that capacity, get something from Joe DeRusso and Aaron Costa on that, but.
There's plenty of capacity.
This, yeah, there's a lot of capacity for the town, and this is a, a brand new, sorry, fairly new infrastructure here with water and sewage.
Hasn't been used yet, so it's still brand new.
Yeah, I think NanoTech Carolina was attached to this branch. So we have water sewer attaching to the existing stubs and manhole there. Utilities is gonna be brought from the overhead that's also along, right here on Safford Drive, brought over to a riser pole, so that everything on site's underground for electric. And. We don't have propane shown or a fuel for heating, so right now they're, they're kind of weighing out if it's a, going with an electric heat pump, and it would just be electric or versus propane, so I think by the time, if this is proven, moves to its building permit, they would have that decided, and we would show on a plan updated of if it's a propane or electric. Fuel source or heating source. So pretty basic on the utilities there. Lighting plan, as mentioned on the checklist, we have just wall packs along the front. So not facing towards, you know, there's also a large buffer of woods around us, but not facing towards them, the neighbors are directly to the road. These are full cut offs, are facing down, and they're LED lights. Landscaping plan, so the outline in green is all the trees to remain, so that would be the limited cutting. And then based on our parking spaces, we're, we're taking. That these trees remaining would be our, what covers for perimeter parking, because this provides a buffer, this is all wooded along through here. So it's not that the trees are just at this spot, it's actually, this is all woods, that remains. And then we end up with requiring one tree and four of the shrubs, so we have P G M. Of the shrub. So we have PGM, the small rhododendrons. So we have four of those right here and the one. Tree, which is a red maple shown here, and we just placed it here because it's, oh, this is wooded already, so it kind of makes it look nicer. We have erosion control details. And then construction details. It's already, as part of the checklist, we also have. Building elevation. Of what the buildings would look like and needs to be finalized with elevation drawings and architectural drawings. It's part of the building ground and then the floor plan. So this is for a five unit and the five and the six unit is just one additional.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
We have any tenants lined up yet?
I don't believe they, they do have tenants lined up yet. Lean on magic construction that they, but I have not been told that they have any.
You have a question?
Yeah, if, if they do go with. There's obviously an aesthetic too. You guys want to plan back where those tanks are being placed.
Regardless of whether you put in propane or not, we need to have a spot on the plan where you would put them if you do use a propane.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was your question. Or just clearing.
Even more over eight, you would want to show on the plan.
Yeah, we would know, need to know where they are. Other questions?
Yeah, just going back to the drainage. There's a concern that water coming off of this hill from somewhere. We need to. Higher level of phosphate. The homes that provide in your lawn or whatever, right? So my concern is, is any water that's actually running into the wetland. That is free of contaminants. Because what happens in wetlands, instead of the water, you know, going down, the water flows through there, right? You know, doing its thing. So that's, that would be a concern that I would have, and maybe what you have is adequate. I'm not certainly the expert on it. You know, I like it to. Kind of validate it that it is accurate and does not increase the height of the burn, but we have anything to do, so.
Yeah, so as we shown on our grading and drainage plan. Utilizing deep sump catch basins through here, so that'll catch most of your sediment load. And then anything that flows out, so anything along the front here is already basically just. Running through this grass area and wood area before it's captured and brought into that system. And then anything off the pavement, the roofs coming around and then being brought into the system. And basically over detention time was sitting there, you end up with everything. Falling out of solution. And then you have a higher orifice and a, and a lower orifice. That allows how much water is coming out during a two, ten, fifty year storm. So these are kind of typical practices for what the state, if it required an alteration, training permit, this is what we'd be submitting. And that's ultimately to treat the water and then also detain the water and need velocities going up site. So the, the whole fear behind how you design it is ultimately, once this is built. Everything falling off the site is matching or less than what it was in the existing condition without those buildings.
As far as snow removal and stuff.
Yeah, so we, we have snow removal on the edge of the park. Snow storage in this area here. This end here, so that's where, where we have our drainage coming across. So basically just at the edge of the park on this side is curved. Which is closest to the wetland, so nothing is flowing to the wetland. We're capturing it with curving and then a catch basin there, so. Nothing flows directly to the wetland.
Do you anticipate the use of road salt? I wouldn't see a deep course.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty small. I mean, unlikely, unless I could see maybe someone who, who rents one of these units doing it right in front of the doorway or something.
It'll depend, the uses will depend individually when they come before the board as to what they're gonna do there. I don't think they are, but we can check that. Getting back to your drainage plan there.
Yes.
The catch basin one, two, and three, it looks like they're laid level. Is that correct? Is that a reason? You can go back to your.
Yes. Oh, yes. The, the pitch of the pipe between catch basins is level.
And how does that work? How does that not fill up the sediment? Just like, how does it drain into the, into your swale back there?
So basically with hydraulic pressure. So it's, it's lower once it gets here, pitches down here. So this will be draining. And even with this laid level, it'll, it'll pull the water through here. The deep sump catch basin, so you have three feet below where the pipe goes in and out. So the sediment falls into the bottom of the pipe. You always end up with a water level in that catch basin and it slowly trickles and it'll just constantly pull through the flat plate.
So you wouldn't think that that pipe, that whole spans there would eventually fill up the sediment. I'm just wondering, why is it outpitched?
If unmaintained.
Because the inverts in of the, I'm going by the invert elevations of those catch basins, and it says laid level.
Laid level.
Just curious, I hadn't seen that before. What is the purpose of a drainage line being level and not? Not tilted?
Yeah, it was based on just a cover on pipe to get it over to this point because of. Grading wise, I think it's, it's a.
You didn't have enough elevation? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct. Yeah, so elevation drops here downhill was fine. And then this is, is so you're almost. Uphill.
So is that gonna work? I mean, you're an engineer, right? But it, does that really make sense to do that? I mean, do you do that occasionally on other?
Occasionally, yeah, we have to. There's a limiting factor such as that.
Very odd that the inverts was the same on all. Okay, if you say it works, you're the engineer, so we will take your word for it. Otherwise you'll have a back truck up there in a couple.
Of the geysers.
So the, the handicap parking spaces in between the buildings there.
Yes.
There's lighting on the front, but there's no lighting on the ends of those buildings. But it'd be a good idea to have a light shine on those handicap.
Right, they're just on the door. The lighting is just along these.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
We could certainly add.
Maybe just one on either side of the building and just light those areas there. See, and, and the, the space in there, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, looking at the drawing there. Here's the contractors, and they're gonna have deliveries there, possibly tractor trailer truck. And is there a maneuverable room in there for tractor trailer? It's, it's not like a building like down the street from there where everyone is there working, where you can go down to the molding department, say, okay, you gotta move your vehicle. There's got a vehicle, tractor trailer coming in here. These guys are gonna be leaving their vehicles there and they're gonna be gone somewhere. So I'm wondering about maneuverability in there to get a tractor trailer in there to.
They, they'll be certainly larger delivery trucks, but this would not handle a tractor trailer turning around. There's not. This would be too tight for a tractor trailer. These being, he's aiming to get contractors as like small trades and that kind of thing.
Yeah, they'll still have deliveries. We're probably box trucks too.
Box trucks. Which a box truck they can make this, this turn.
Yeah, I can see a box truck getting in there, but.
A tractor trailer would not be able to turn around.
I don't think so. And no loading docks there, correct?
No loading dock.
You say the box truck could make this turn and point to the handicap parking spots.
Right, so there's an aisle between here. So this is twenty-four feet between the end of the space. So you basically have a standard road width. Between here and this tee. So a box truck could pull in and back up this way and help. But a tractor trailer certainly, this is not laid out for tractor trailer deliveries or. And, and as mentioned, there's no loading dock either that you can back a tractor trailer up to. To be, the smaller contractors went in the spaces.
So it's still, if they do get deliveries by tractor trailer, they'd have to deliver out the street and everything unload there.
Which they can't do.
Which they would do, you know.
I wouldn't foresee any, but. In, in units of these size having tractor trailer deliveries and materials.
Then I guess the planning board, if we're all here. When they're doing those, probably have to see, you know, if it's a company that's gonna have tractor trailer deliveries in there, that'd have to be a consideration of any uses going in there, I would think. That's a curve right there. Yeah, but pulling in there is fine. That box truck, I'm sure can make it in there.
Have to work it out with the fairgrounds.
Maybe so, but we have to take that into consideration for the long, because we don't know what's going in there anyways. And it doesn't matter to us until we see what the use is gonna be. We're just looking at the buildings right now and it's like. Any other, nobody from the public?
Contractor wants to come in and question.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're gonna have to keep it in our heads to, to look at that. When they put it out there for. For rent.
Between the two sides of the building.
On the end of the building.
So discussion to put one here and one here. Because our ADA spaces are on this.
And Mike, has the fire department looked at that?
I'm yes.
They're, they're okay with that?
Yeah.
Getting behind the building, trying to like that, not a concern?
Yeah, again, they were, they were considering, you know, the potential uses and going for the same thing. They're gonna go through the same process you guys go through. As you said, it comes to the.
Okay.
The fire truck is roughly twelve feet wide, and I asked Mattson as well too, and he agreed, he was like, it should be fine.
Good, okay. Any other questions from the board? So let's see. And yeah, that's right. You're gonna look to see if there's a stub for that.
We will learn if vice sewer connects. Yeah, so there's definitely a manhole there that was placed there, but.
Yeah, you'd have to core.
From what we've been told, that there's a stub out of that.
But if you do core the manhole, you'll have to change the invert the bottom, right?
Yes.
Okay, you can drop into that into invert.
Yes.
Okay. No, not with a sewer line. Eighth inch for football, take on that. Okay, any other questions from the board? I think I said no other questions. I don't think we're requiring anything. Yes, then I will close the public hearing if there are comments here, then I will close the public hearing. What's it look like? Looks like it's pretty tight in there for the tractor trailers, but they don't have tractor trailers in there, then they don't.
It was just remembering our brain.
Yeah, and again, we don't know the uses and we will know the uses when they go in one by one. So that's fine. Planning board always sees that. No, we'll do it on a, on a one by one basis. We'll see what their business is. You know, if they're accepting tractor trailer deliveries, then they won't be able to go in there probably. Or make other arrangements for someone. You know, they can be creative about it if they want to. Yeah, so yeah, they're good with the waters who are obviously they're going in. Part of my, I guess, a sign off on it. Looks like it just barely fits on that piece up in there, that piece of dry line up there. So. And no other questions about it? And then motion to approve is in order?
So I agree with Mike there today. You really can't see that properly to get that clearance opening with the driver.
Yep.
Like a blind draw.
Oh, like, yeah. We could, it's probably not for those guys. It's probably for us in the police department. But yeah, we could. We can ask. So highway department, they would put something out for us, police department, if they think something should be put up there. That's right. Depending on how fast they're coming through there. Don't know that. So anything else? And then motion to approve being in order? Motion by Brandon to approve the site plan seconded by. Second, Michael Yarke. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate us in the eye. All those votes? You ready to go? Yes, there wasn't on there. It was a suggestion and looks like they're gonna do it. And we also had a suggestion about. If there's gonna be a propane tank in there, we need to see on the drawings there. We have to take another motion for that because they already passed that motion with no conditions. So. We can trust these guys probably with those small things there and. Michael put them before. So let's, yeah, that, and it's not a huge thing there. It's if they use propane, we wanna know where the propane tanks are. And the lighting, they said at the meeting that they would play in and it will be. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Because yeah, we don't wanna miss anything. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to discussions and other business, and we're having just a small discussion on ex parte communication, meaning talking out of school and those types of things that. And that, that has to do with discussing site plans. Amongst ourselves, meet one another on the road or something like that, or down at the dump, or, or within a butter or something like that. We can discuss it up to a certain extent. You can discuss things like, is there going to be a site development on this piece of property? Yeah, or it's gonna be, what's it gonna look like? We know what it's gonna look like. It's when you get into your opinion is when you get yourself into trouble. When you say, well, I don't think that should go in there because someone so did this or that, or, or I don't think this kind of use. You have to fulfill to yourselves when you're discussing that. You know, somebody emails you, you're on phone or running to somebody. And save it, save the opinions for the meeting. Anything that's factual about the site plan certainly can be discussed or conveyed to. A property owner or a resident of the town or anything like that. If we're together or if you're over the town hall and, and the applicant is there and you're over there looking at some of this stuff like that. Look at it as fine, but save your questions and save any discussions at all about it. Just for the board here and not with the applicant. You know, they might say, well, what do you think about my plan there? You know, I think it's pretty good. You can't really say, yeah, I think it's a good idea too, or I think it stinks. Either way, you just keep it to yourself and then the board. When we have a meeting, all that comes up then. Anything technical? Yeah, but you can't really say, well. I think the parking is too small, or I think this or that with the applicant I'm talking about because. You know, that just sets yourself up at the meeting. Well, he told me that something, something went this way and that way. So we save it all for the meeting. Anything technical, again, anything that's just factual about the site plans, we can discuss with anybody that we want to discuss. If we have more than three people to get together, together discussing a site plan, you can't do that sub meeting. And we aren't supposed to be having a meeting outside of court. And if we're emailing one another back and forth, that's a no no as well. You can't discuss with ourselves. Well. What do you think about the parking? Or what do you think about the fire and this or that with other board members? That's not good. Save that for the meetings. Technical stuff, that is, is it an actual right that there are two doors and they all have one door? That's one thing that you can discuss. It's fine, but. Yes, I think.
Has this been an issue that's come up?
No, it isn't. Bill Hotwelter thought that we weren't just doing our due diligence of discussing that and just bringing it up because we had a new member on the board and we haven't talked about it in quite a while. He's asked me to talk about it before and Stefan just reminded me again that we should talk about it. And we should from time to time, just to know because you get caught off, off guard. You know, somebody can ask you about this site plan or that site plan. Either before we've seen it in the board or even when we're talking about it at the board, we got one continued. You know, we shouldn't be discussing that while it's continued till the next meeting, those types of things. So it's just good practice to go over that. Did I leave anything else? So also, we have in front of us, oh, we have to elect officers after town meeting. So are there any volunteers for chairman and vice chairman? Of the board, not you, but me. No volunteers for chairman or vice chair. Okay. Then we have to have a motion for chairman and vice chairman and have to vote on. Okay, motion by Victoria, that I remain as chair and Richard remained as vice chair is our second to the motion.
Why don't you second?
Uh, no, you're not seated. No second, so that's it. That's it. I'm free. I'm, I'm out of here now. Okay. Second, okay, we did get a second there, we'll buy the slide, he seconded the motion, and he's allowed to second, slide seconded the motion, and he's allowed to.
No, I knew better than to second.
Yeah, that's right, you know, I didn't wanna take the job, I don't like being chairman, but.
So people start, last year you gave us a big talk about how you want the rest of us to chirp up.
We gotta vote on this.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor, and a second, and so all those in favor of Victoria's motion, say aye, aye, all those opposed? And, okay, we have it, as far as chirping up, that's right, because I'm running the meeting here, and it's difficult to concentrate on the subject matter, it's difficult to concentrate on the site plan. And run the meeting at the same time, especially when they get complicated, a lot of people here and stuff like that, so I'll miss stuff, I know him, sometimes after the meeting, I say, darn it, I missed such and such, you know, they should have picked me up on it. So I'm relying on Beverly does it sometimes, I'm relying on the rest of you, just to pick me up on something, just say, to stop the meeting for a minute, Stefan does it once in a while too. And just go over this, did you miss this, or did you need to say that, or this or that, and, and keep it straight, so we keep our meetings good and straight. So gotta help me out, because again. It's a lot, a lot going on at the meeting sometimes, and all this stuff. Uh, we have another item on here, and that's, we all have it, and that's the, uh, the boilerplate or generic notice of planning board decision. I'll get a copy of that, this is what we're, we're contemplating on putting out as a generic letter. And so I'll just read it, and it's duly noticed meeting on said date, we put the date there, so on the planning board voted to approve or just, or deny. We'll just leave this one as approved, because the deny one doesn't have any conditions or anything like that.
Oh yeah, no, 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 I would definitely change it up.
The deny one will be a different one, because we have to be very specific on why we denied the application, if we do, and we have to list them all down there, and what they can do to alleviate it as well. So this one we'll just keep for an approval. So, uh, so on the planning board voted to approve, uh, the site plan review application submitted by, and rename the applicant in there. Uh, for, and they put a description of what the project was, with the following conditions, if there are conditions. And then we have under the administrative conditions, not requiring a compliance hearing, this, this lets them know that those conditions are administrative only, and they can be, uh, looked at by Stefan or Mike here. And they can be dealt with that way, without the planning board having to do it, having a public hearing on it. The other conditions being, uh, we're current, requiring a compliance hearing, and we would let the applicant know which they are, and those are generally things. That we want them to put on the site plan that they missed, or, or some kind of a change, a building moved. A change in the sewer, or anything like that on site plan, anything we want them to change on site plan, they'd have to come back for a compliance hearing. Or we continue the public hearing, and they do it that way. That would be the opportunity. Anyway, we would list the compliance, uh, conditions there. And then the next paragraph says, upon submission and review of the previous items that were there, the site plan becomes effective by written endorsement on the plaque, signed and dated by the chairman of the planning board. No deviation from the plans as approved shall be permitted without further approval by the planning board. Then it tells us that the approval shall remain valid for one year from the date upon which the planning board voted to approve, and then we put that date right down there. Provided that active and substantial development or building has occurred within that one year. Then we tell them for good cause shown, a one-time twelve-month extension may be requested no less than thirty days prior to the expiration, expiration of the approval. And we tell them we look forward to working with you on the successful completion of this project, all conditions must be met prior to issuance of a building permit, meaning they can do site work. Right, Mike, they can do site work, uh, put the drainage in, and all that type of stuff, but no foundations, right?
Right, and, and, and even site work can't happen until it's required in AOT.
Oh, right, yeah, definitely so, yeah, so, and it, and it tells them all conditions must be met prior to issuance of a building permit, that way. They cannot build anything at all, they can prepare those, like cut trees down, get everything done, but can't build anything until everything is met, I mean, met the administrative and the compliance conditions. Let's see, uh, then it tells, uh, yeah, if you have any questions about the building permit application process, please contact Mike Jatman, code enforcement, or the land use office here. And then please find a copy of the draft minutes from the planning board meeting. Any questions, uh, can be reached in land, this office, and that is what we're considering. What do we think about that, any additions, or, you and I were discussing it earlier.
Just as you're reading that again, the. The upon submission and review of previous items. Okay, so are you implying that? The approval time clock doesn't start until they submit those, uh, previous conditions, either administrative or compliance hearing?
No, we're telling them in that, in that sentence that says, upon submission and review of the previous items, that means all the conditions, administrative or conditions that for compliance. The site becomes effective by written endorsement, because.
Submitting this, are we submitting this to the applicant?
Oh, no, 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 the applicant submits proof that they got all their permits, that would be an administrative one, and proof that they met all the conditions, but that would be done in the compliance hearing, anyway, client would already know that one. But we wouldn't know about the administrative ones, but they still, they have to submit to the land use office that they got all their. Permits from DOT, all their driveway permits, all their sewer hookup permits, all that type of stuff, and then that means the, uh, site plan becomes effective, because then the chairman will sign it. But it doesn't mean that it changes that one-year time period.
Okay, so we're at some point, I think somehow before that, we'd have to state that. This little bit, the upon submission or review. Does not work. When we, when we approved the application. And we say, okay, we're approving this, these conditions, and, uh, administrative and compliant, things that would be compliant. Those do not deviate or change the fact that the clock started.
That's right.
Okay, and. I don't know, someone that's.
So you wanna take it, wanna take, wanna take that, wanna take that definitive statement that Scott read, where it says it starts now, move it to the top.
Okay, let's see here, if we do that. That sounds like a good suggestion, because it says, if we move this one to the very top, and it would start with this, the approval shall remain valid for one year from the day, uh, date upon which the planning board voted to approve. Put that date there, whatever date it was. Uh, let's see, provided that active and substantial development or building has occurred within that one year, then we tell them for good cause shown, or one, uh, time, twelve months extension may be requested. No less than thirty days prior to the expiration of the approval. Then we can put on, upon submission and review of the previous items, the site plan becomes effective.
Is that, since it's even, is it even necessary, because it seems like, what does it tell us that the rest of it isn't telling us?
The upon submission one, right?
Yeah, the upon submission just confuses me.
Yeah, because you're right, they don't really even know, need to know that, that's just for our stuff, that it is effective, because the chairman signs it, and okay, it's effective, it's, might be considered final approval in some cases. Not necessarily under the RSA's, final approval is pretty much when the bo, uh, board votes to approve, and that's, that's the, the final approval right there. So you're right, maybe we ought to just scratch that sentence, and just, let's see, we can take that right off? Let me just read through your. Yeah, that first sentence, that's, that reads, upon submission and review of the previous items. The site plan becomes effective by a written endorsement on the plaque, signed and dated by the chairman of the planning board, okay? So let's see.
And then leave the date of approval at where it was, so that it flows oriented to extension.
Okay, so, so you're saying there is another sentence after that, that says, no deviation from the plans as approved shall be permitted without further approval, we can move that down to the last. Right, okay, we move that down, so, so let's read this, so it would be. Yeah, it would start with, the approval shall remain valid for one year, that's what you're saying, right? They did.
Right, I'm just saying that the extension, I don't know if it should be. In the beginning, so much as. I could almost talk to the most followed, that's your basic process, and then everything, all the other will, all the other detail follow.
Okay, you've lost me, so what are we doing here, we're probably getting rid of that upon submission and review, right? Okay, we're getting rid of that, so the next sentence, okay, if I left that out, I'm gonna leave that out, right? So the next sentence now says, no deviation from the plans as approved shall be permitted without further approval by the planning board. Then it goes, the approval shall remain valid for one year from the date upon which the planning board voted to approve, but the date down. Provided that active and substantial development or building has occurred within that one year. Then we tell them for good cause shown, a one-time twelve-month extension may be requested no less than thirty days prior to the expiration of the approval. So we leave it, did we just scratch out that first, that first sentence out, and started off with no deviation? Mike, okay, Stefan? All right, that sounds good to me, too. Oh, yeah, got it, kicked it again. You got another thing on that, right?
Yeah, I just, um. I'll, I'll go back here. Uh, no, uh, no deviation plans, uh, as approved shall be permitted without further approval by the planning board, that's the compliance part.
Uh, no, it is, no, it is not, no, that's just letting them know that if you change one thing on that site line, you gotta come back for the board.
Okay, it does not, we've got to let them, or make them aware that it does not change the clock, it doesn't restart.
But, but there's nothing on there that would restart it, I mean, a deviation, uh, you're thinking that if they deviate from it, it would start the clock, but if they deviate from it.
Because I, I made the mistake of reopening. The.
Oh, yeah.
Public hearing to change something in the parking.
Yeah.
And because of the way it was stated, I guess, everybody interpreted that as, that's when the clock now restarted. For that one-year period, and I just want, I just wanna make sure that we're not getting ourselves into a situation where that's going to change what our intent is.
Well, that, that particular instance you're talking about, when you took over for chairman there, that, it was, that's a small matter, really, we don't over reopen public hearings, for one thing. And on compliance, of course, on compliance hearings, we only discuss what's the, uh, compliance conditions are, nothing else than that, but. Either way, it didn't change us time clock, like you're saying, what changed the time clock is that provision we had in our site plan regs that says. After you met the conditions, then the clock started again, and that had nothing to do with you reopening the hearing or anything, so that's what changed the clock.
Okay, and we're not, and what we're looking at right now. There's, there's no way that that could.
No, I think anyways, we spelled it right up, by putting the date down and saying, one year from the date upon which the planning board voted to approve, and there's only one time the planning board votes to approve, and that's in a meeting like this year, we voted to approve, that's it, and it's done, so. And then, but we will need to, on our next meeting, we do need to have a public hearing on taking those provisions out of our site plan regs that says that. After you make your conditions, the clock starts, because we're taking that out of there, we had that in there to help, uh, the contractors or applicants. With, uh, getting their, getting all their permits and ducks in a row, as, as the saying goes, and so they wouldn't be cut short on time, I remember that's why that was in there, but. It's too ambiguous, it's, it means two separate things in our site plan regs, so we gotta get rid of it.
Okay, the sentence that, uh. Provided that active and substantial development or building has occurred. I've got a problem with the word substantial. What is substantial?
The, the planning board has to designate what is substantial on, on every site plan, if they want to designate that, that wording comes from the RSA's, the RSA's use that substantial word in there, so we use it in our regulations as well. And right, it can mean a lot of things, but. They, the RSA's are written, so they, they aren't tying our hands, that a certain thing has to be done on every single job, they're saying, you know, we gave you substantial, and you guys decide what it's gonna be. And we're probably gonna say the same thing to the applicant, if, when we get larger projects and stuff like that, substantial, but. You're right, it is, yeah, that's right.
I can see somebody going in, stripping a parcel of land of trees and natural growth, and saying, well, that's not substantial on the compliance.
Well, sometimes it is, we've considered that substantial improvements to the property, when they go in and, and cut the trees, get some grading, get a driveway in there, that type of stuff.
You went further than what it said.
I went further than what you said. And obviously, it's gonna be on a case by case basis, because no, no two projects are gonna be identical, this person might buy a completely wooden log, and logging that whole entire thing might be substantial. You know, but this other person might buy a lot that's already cleared with a driveway put in, and a septic system put in, or, or whatever, you know, so we have to take it case by case.
Just get there somewhere, either in the RSA or in our site plan regs, that. Discounts, clearing the land, as you say, like a clear cut, or something like that, that is not considered part of the, could not be considered substantial. I don't know, I don't know, I've come across that somewhere, and I wish to.
Sounds kind of familiar.
I think ultimately, it becomes kind of an intent versus, versus content, content question, I mean, if somebody just comes in and clears off the moment, and bags. I think we're gonna be able to recognize that this was not what we were hoping for.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and you can't, right, guard for everything, so, right, just keep our eyes open.
Another purchase, so that we can try to engage in that conversation with applicants.
And that's another thing to keep me straight on with the board, if any of the members think that we should say, what's substantial development for any project going on there? We need to, to do it, and, and lay it right down there at the meeting, what it is, and I'll forget, so.
And we have another projects alive, and as you drive by, then, all right, what would have been substantial here? You know, the Flatley project is removing a hundred and ninety thousand cubic yards of materials, if they're using triax trucks, that's twelve thousand turnbodies. That's pretty substantial.
Pretty substantial.
That's about right, yeah.
You're up by like five, I think, yeah.
But it's also substantial with the one that we approved tonight up on, uh, across Route 10 there, you know, they're putting, they're putting one little building up, and doing some grading there, and that's substantial.
Right, as a percentage of the project, absolutely. And, and again, a lot of that, I think, what makes that substantial for me was the drainage. Just building might not have done it for me, but that drainage was going in no matter what, and that's of course what I'm a major concern about. Uh, I would even go so far as to say, even if they just did the drainage, I'd be like happier than the building, I mean, that's above that, it's controlling that stone line, so.
No, that's true, that's very true. I think that was it. Oh, yes, yeah.
And, um, what I'm thinking is, we have a couple of alternates who, I was looking through our, our. Those are procedure to see if we have anything about attendance in there, and I don't see anything.
We don't.
Other than you're supposed to show up.
Yeah.
And I just feel like if, if people are not coming, then there might be others who would want to come.
Yeah, Steve showed up, he seems to be the only one.
It was a time where it was sick, I mean. Just don't try to send him an email, is he more? I made, I made a deal for that. I think we allowed five alternates.
No, I don't think we're allowed five, three alternates, right, three. But, uh, let's see, we, we assign them for, I think, three, or the last one's a three-year, wasn't it? I think so, and the one before that was either a two-year or a three-year. But what we've done in the past is we've sent a letter to them saying, you know, are you still interested in being alternate or not, if not, let us know, because we'd like to fill the position with someone who is interested in it. And that has worked pretty well over the time, so we could do that to those other two, because they aren't showing up anymore, and you're right to bring that up, and, and we need alternates that actually are gonna come here and show up and participate. So Stefan, could you just pen a little letter to those two guys, and, and just, just tell them that, yeah.
Might even be, might even be worth just giving them a call first, a friendly call.
Right, that too, yeah, say, like, yeah, no problem, if you're not interested, that's fine, you're on time, that's okay.
Lives, lives change.
Yeah.
Work schedules change.
I don't know if they really have to resign, if, if their word is, if they say, no, I'm not interested, then the board can appoint someone else, else, and if they have a problem with it, then they can take it up a slight.
And second, we, uh, and kind of update on plane.
They submitted their parking changes.
They submitted their parking changes. I haven't gotten to you because I need to get the plans.
And they probably have closed on sale on that property at EBA, right?
Or not to my knowledge.
They are seeking an accounting register.
Yeah, 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 that turned out.
So what is our, uh, agenda next, uh, meeting?
We. We have one continuing public hearing.
What year we have that.
And we also might have a multi-tenant.
The, the dilemma that Steph told us is that they. And a new planner will face is like these three applications tonight. They literally came in with 20 minutes of each other in the last hour.
Yeah, I understand.
It's dreadful.
It's dreadful.
And one of the first things we're gonna discuss with the other planners and we're all in agreement is should we move the, the date back a little bit and give ourselves a little bit more room? Because it really stinks when you're showing up last minute like that.
What's the date now? Oh, how long is it? Is it two weeks? No, I mean, the date you're talking about is, is the time before the, uh, the meeting that they can submit.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 the deadline is, maybe give us another day or two to, we have a day or two. You know, it's, it's, and it's also not unusual for, for regulars, uh, that come before this board, who know us, and we work well together, go, oh, Monday morning, and they go, ah, and how about it? And then Monday morning becomes Monday early afternoon and it's really, you know, so it's, it's, you know, you wanna be accommodating and the rest of it and appreciate the fact that everybody's over working on your staff.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, you also have to do a good job. There's a certain amount of time that requires, Steph and I have a lot of work to do tomorrow just for Nissan that we didn't expect to have. Especially again, if they drew that retention plan on there, you would have thought that was based on something.
And you can, you can still also tell, you know, if you get swamped like that and they, they know, they, oh, I wanna be on that meeting and no matter what, then you can just explain to them that, okay, your clock starts then, the, the planning board can accept your application or not. The planning board, it's up to them. If they do accept it and they want more information, you've got still that, that time, 65 days, and that's it in that time. So if you wanna chance it, then you can chance it, you know, and you can tell them that, you guys don't need to spend the wee hours of the morning trying to figure out what the heck it is going on with these site plans, um, if, if they wanna push you.
You know, and I, and I totally appreciate that, that, that outlook, but we really, we really try desperately hard.
Yeah, I know you do, yeah, and it's.
I really wanna make sure that what you guys have is as good as we can get.
Yeah.
Well, you're respectful, you're time, you're volunteers, we get paid.
But if the applicants, who are the same people typically, if they know, they're gonna work in it, you know.
They generally.
They're gonna buy or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I gotta get it in this week for, you know, three weeks from now, but maybe we can get on that here.
Yeah, yeah, it's generally, it's generally pretty good, but just like I said, just, just, you know, like these three, literally, it was so funny, they almost, they mostly communicated, sure to ride it in.
Why don't you, I don't know what rules or regulations would have to be changed. But language to the effect of, to ensure a date within two weeks. Your submission must be given to the plant, to the, uh, office three weeks beforehand.
We have something to that effect anyway.
Yeah, well, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I appreciate that. Like I said, when, 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 uh, when I'm joined, it's gonna be, you know, part of the process, of course, is always when you get someone new who comes from a different place, you know, one of the, one of the things you try to squeeze out of them so hard is, is things that you can learn that they've got, that maybe can make us better, because that's the whole point. If you take somebody from the same place, you get the same thing. So it's always fun to hear about, you know, anytime you hire somebody and, and, and they make you, you go, wow, I never even would have thought about that, you hired the right person. And that's what we'll be doing in the, in the first two, three, four weeks is just drilling for gold.
And, and another thing, when they do come in, it's, can't stress more that, that it can spare the time just to come in and spend an hour or two hours with the, the plans. It, it really does help if you can do that. And, and it's okay for us to discuss all that stuff with Mike or with Stephon here. It's not ex parte when you're doing that because they're helping us, they're there, you know, we got questions about the plan. Do you think this is right? Do you think that's right? We can do all that with those guys. And if there is more than one of us, there might be considered a meeting, one can be in one room, one can be in another room, looking at different plans. But if you can spend some time with the plan, I know people work, Brandon works all the time there, he's never home, but, um, if you can do it, you can get a lot off of those plans and it, it's much better when he's making that presentation because it registers that, oh yeah, I saw that, or I didn't see that, or those things, so.
Yeah, if anybody's so, you know, they really wanna see them and they can't make it in the office or something, I will bring this other point.
You shouldn't have said that. Mic's open there, I shouldn't have said that.
Rob off and set up the air wall hole on your way to work. But you have to get the sandwich first.
Okay, anything else for the meeting tonight? Bit of the order, as they say. If not, we adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Richard, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon, is there any further discussion? Favor, to give a saying aye?
Aye.
Or the calls, we are adjourned, thank you. Oh, of course I am, yeah.
I'm sure you have ready.